Thank you.
I called a Tuesday, July 23rd, 2019 work session of the course of the City Council to order. Adam Clark, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Glover.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lucas Berg.
Here.
Mr. Moody. Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Mayor Row.
Here. I think everybody got the same email from Bill that he might be delayed or because of weather. Uh, Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. This is the shortest introduction that I've ever given in my four years. The City's Financial Advisor, Davenporting Company, LLC, represented this evening by Mr. Kyle Lux, Senior Vice President of Public Finance, will present two presentations. The Retirement and Pension Obligation Bonds and the Rating Agency Review and Strategies. Mr. Lux.
Thank you very much, Dr. Patton, and Vice Mayor, members of Council. Nice to see you as always. Nice to see you on a day where it got a little rain. It's not 105 degrees outside, so usually you're kind of complaining about a rainy day, but it felt awful good, although it may have snarled some traffic. As Dr. Patton mentioned, I'm really here to provide two things tonight. One, I think, is very pertinent and timely, given interest rates and given some feedback we got from the rating agencies and an opportunity the city has with respect to our pension bonds from 2013. So we'll talk about that first. And second, we'll give a little bit of an overview and an update in terms of what the rating agencies gave us in terms of their formal feedback and their reports literally just a month or so ago. And so those two things are going to be intertwined, and we have what is hopefully good news. We briefed the Pension Board just a week or two ago in terms of the opportunity, but we'll walk you through that in terms of the pension bonds, and then we'll talk about the rating agency side of things. But again, it all kind of links together at some level in terms of the holistic financial management of the city. So with that up here on the screen, I believe you all have a hard copy in front of you as well, and certainly we'll go through this. I'm happy to answer questions as you have them. Since 2013, the city, again, from our perspective as your outside financial advisor, has made very significant progress with respect to both its pension and what we call OPEB, which is basically that retiree healthcare side of things. And we list three things there in particular. The funding level of the closed pension funds. And again, we're talking about the two city closed pension funds, not necessarily VRS that is obviously handled by the state, but the two pension funds that are administered by the city with the Pension Board. And so the funding level of those two is much, much enhanced versus 2013. It's sort of surprising that's been six years ago, but it was indeed when those two pension funds were plus or minus 28%, 32% funded. And we did indeed issue those pension bonds of about 168 million to bring those funding levels to about 80%. So a large part of what we're going to talk about is how we help get ourselves towards that 80% and some of the trends there involving a refinancing. Number two, the governance and investment procedures, policies, et cetera, with respect to the pension funds. Those two over the last several years have been enhanced. They've been updated. Certainly, the rating agencies have seen that and appreciated that, and that has been enhanced. Third, which we won't talk as much about today, but certainly is important, is the other post-employment benefits. The mayor will remember this. When we did the pension bonds back in 2013, we really told the rating agencies it's going to be a two-part strategy. First and foremost, we're going to up the funded level of the pensions, and second, we're going to tackle OPEB. And thus far, we've been able to keep track with both of those things. The rating agencies have seen that. They've understood that by virtue of the OPEB liability dropping from something like $200-plus million down to the $20-million range, meaning lower is better. And so that's been a major improvement. We won't talk as much about that today, but it certainly is important as we think about the future. The second bullet point there, after the 2013 pension bonds, we got ourselves basically to 80% funded, but as we sit here today, that funding level is now closer to 70%. So again, that's a number where higher is better. And what we're really trying to do with this refinancing, we're going to talk about the next couple of pages, is find a way to help enhance that funding level, get us back towards 80%. I'm going to kind of steal the thunder from the next couple of pages here and say that this refunding by itself, unless we have some incredible change in the market over the next couple of weeks, which we don't expect, this is not going to solve the problem in and of itself. So the goal, really, best practice-wise, is to get to 80%. This, we hope, will make a meaningful dent in that, but it's not going to, in and of itself, sort of be that silver bullet that's going to get us to 80. So there's going to be a continued need for discipline and study and review of the pension funds, but certainly in the short run, we're going to try and take advantage of lower rates to do everything we can and get some more dollars into the pension fund. Last bullet point there, you say, why is it that we're at roughly 70% as opposed to 80%? And again, as outsiders, we're not handling your investments on purpose. What it looks like is, over the last several years, the plans have not met their seven-and-a-quarter discount rate, which is that rate the actuaries use and factor into their projections in terms of the funded ratios. And second, some of the demographic and actuarial assumptions that they use, again, all with your independent actuaries, both of those have been working against us the last couple of years. The good, if there is some good in that, is you're not alone in that situation. We've seen a lot of your neighbors, a lot of folks across the country, in terms of local government pensions are not meeting those 7-plus percent discount rates. And the updates, the actuarial assumptions, have not helped that situation the last couple of years. So you're not alone in that situation. The rating agencies are hearing the same kind of things from, you know, local governments across the country, but it has still provided some headwinds the last couple of years in terms of the funded status.
Now, before you -- well, I was going to ask Shannon.
Kyle, a question. So some of those assumptions are based upon, you know, the fact that people are living longer, and so benefits have to be extended longer. Is that part of the assumptions that probably go into the actuarial thought process?
That is part of it, yes.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right. Next page here. Top bullet point here, the funded status of those, both our pensions and our OPEB, will certainly be a focus, and it has been a focus of the rating agencies. So in our next presentation, we'll talk about some of the commentary we got from the rating agencies, but I think as we think about long-term, the city's credit rating really being a barometer for how we are running the city financially, the funded status of the pension plans and the OPEB as well are going to be a major factor for us. So it's why we talk so much about it, and certainly why we're going to try and jump on top of this refinancing if the markets will allow. Lastly there, again, we have our three outstanding credit ratings, Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch. Those are all affirmed. So in the short run here, we got that good news. We got that feedback. All the ratings were affirmed. We gave them all the latest information on the finances, the demographics. Talk more about that in the next presentation, but in the short run here, they are, you know, comfortable and have affirmed the city's credit rating. So our next page here. The refinancing itself, we'll give you some more details here and some graphs, et cetera, in terms of where rates are, but the long and short of it is, we've seen, especially the last couple of months, very quickly, a drop in interest rates, and that has resulted in an ability to refinance the pension bonds, really a portion thereof, and we'll talk more about that in the next couple of pages, refinance those for debt service savings. So very simply, if you've had a mortgage and you had a rate that maybe was a 4%, 5%, and so rates move down, you're able to lower that, that at its most simple level is what we're talking about. We're not talking about extending the final maturity of the loan, the same final maturity. We're talking about bringing the interest rate down. And importantly, we've put this in this little kind of blue, blue bubble, if you will. Our strong recommendation to you, and I believe there's a resolution on your agenda tonight, is that any dollars that we save by virtue of this refinancing goes directly into the pension funds in addition to what was already budgeted to put into those funds. So another way of saying, when the budget was adopted, you budgeted to, meaning you, City Council, to make your regularly scheduled pension payments into the fund. The idea here is that any savings we generate would go into those pension funds as like almost an additional payment. Again, maybe to use the mortgage example, if you've ever, again, had a mortgage, maybe get to the end of the year and say, you know what, had a pretty good year, got a few extra dollars, I'm going to make an extra payment towards that mortgage, reduce the principal amount. It's a similar kind of concept here in terms of what we're thinking about and recommending.
Kyle.
Sir?
What is the amount, if we were to infuse with cash, to move it from 70% to 80% today?
I believe, sir, I'd have to, I want to double-check that, but I think it's about $80 million.
Eighty million?
I believe so, yes, sir. It's a big number. And I want to double-check that for accuracy, but I think order of magnitude, it's substantial.
Now, you're saying that the funds made to go back into pension plan to be to be
To help with the
To, to, the dollars will go in as basically additional payments into the pension fund. So it's going to be money over and above what you'd already planned to put in there. So think of it maybe like a savings account, and you're putting certain monies away every single year. What we're going to do with this is we're going to put some money over and above, some extra savings into that.
That will go to the debt?
It'll go towards, it'll go towards helping the funded ratio, put more dollars into the pension funds that'll help pay those benefits over time.
Right now, our liability is a dollar, and we only have 70 cents to pay on that dollar.
That's right.
And the goal is to get to a dollar.
You know, I know that.
Yeah. And I was just saying it for the public. And so our goal is to get even beyond 80 at some point in the future.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think, I think the dollar analogy there is a good one. If we know we basically, in some sense, owe a dollar, that's what the actuaries have told us. Use the mayor's example, we've got 70 cents. We need to get a dollar in there, and really, the best practice in the industry is to have about 80 cents, but something higher is better. We're trying to get from where we are at 70 and increase that up to the 80 level. But this refinancing is not going to do it by itself.
About $5 million.
So that said, we've been watching this very closely, and again, we're moving as quickly as, as we're able to, given the various constraints with schedules, et cetera. But we'll talk about the schedule here in the next couple of pages. Our goal is to be, we will be talking to the rating agencies tomorrow. We hope to have feedback from them within a week, if not sooner, and then be in the marketplace, basically, the second week of August, to sell the bonds and lock in the interest rates. So as we talk about the estimated savings that it stands today, that's going to move a little bit every day.
Is all the outstanding bonds callable at this time?
Not all of them. So we've got about 130-some million that are outstanding. About 120 of that is callable. On purpose, we'll be refinancing only a portion of the loan, and it's the portion of the loan that is going to create interest rate savings for us. There's a portion of the loan that is not going to create interest rate savings for us, and in fact, would probably cost us money to refinance, a penalty to doing that. We're going to leave that piece alone. That's going to continue being fixed interest rates, fixed payments, and the portion that we will refinance, we are going to do so if indeed it creates savings, moving to a higher rate.
Oh, yeah.
So now that will bring us from 67 to what was that?
So if we're right now about 70, when you look at the two funds together, it should immediately take us to about 71 and 1/2, somewhere in that range.
Just a little.
Order of magnitude. Your actuaries, John Hancock, have done some projections. We'll talk about this on a couple of pages. We'll show you a graph that I think will be visually useful, wherein if we're able to achieve all the savings that we're seeing right now over a five-year time period.
Five years.
Be about a two percentage point pickup over a projection where you don't have the refinancing. So we'll talk about this in a couple of pages, and I think a graph will be helpful. So on the next page, this is something we've talked about with the Pension Board and certainly with the U.N. City Council in the past. This historical funded ratio, you can see where it's been. We looked at it since 2011. This is looking at the two pension funds as they're kind of stuck together. You see on the left-hand side, between 2011, 2012, whereby that funded ratio was at 30%, which is just a very, very low level. At that point, coming out of the financial crisis, there certainly was nervousness about the sustainability of the pension funds, again, for the city and for the retirees at such a very low funded level. And so at that time, the city issued the pension bonds, and you see that immediate jump from something like 30% up to about 80% in that one single year. That's not a mistake. That is the infusion of the dollars, wherein we borrowed that 168-plus million dollars, went into the pension fund, and got us up to about that 80% level almost immediately. It wasn't for free, since we now have the pension bonds outstanding and need to make the payments on those, but it did significantly enhance.
But it fit within the amount of money that the city was paying towards retirement?
Exactly right.
The city did not have to raise taxes. In fact, there was a delta between what was being paid and what was going to be paid in debt service.
That's, that's right. To the mayor's point, at the time, even as the actuaries ran the number at that point, it was actually more cost-effective cash-flow-wise in terms of the total payments the city was going to have to make between the pensions and the pension bonds to go ahead and issue those pension bonds. And the combination of the payment of those pension bonds and the other payments that the actuaries determined would have to go into that pension fund were less than if you did not issue the pension bonds. And so, so that got us to the 2013 time period wherein we were at roughly 80%. And you see relative to 2011, 2012, we're still certainly at a solid level. So we've made a whole lot of progress from where we were back in 2011, 2012. What we've done on the right-hand side is to blow up, sort of enlarge, those last couple of years, and what we see is a trend wherein, which we talked about at the outset, that funded ratio has declined over the last four years, from the 77 level to the 74, to a point now where we're right just a smidgen above 70. And that, again, has to do with those investment returns and some of those actuarial assumptions, which, to Councilman Glover's point, as folks live longer, as the actuaries come up with that, we don't come up with that, the actuaries do. That's their, their world, but as they factor that into their numbers, that has made our funded ratio look worse the last couple of years. And so, again, we watch that closely. The rating agencies watch that closely. And the goal is to, if you see that red arrow going in the downward direction, identify strategies that'll get it moving back up towards 80%. So the next page. Again, we've talked about certainly the refinancing strategy. We'll give you some more details here. The existing interest rate on the pension bonds, and the second bullet point here, we're talking at this point about the portion of the bonds, that roughly 120 million that we'd be refinancing, is about a 437. So
120?
Yes, yes, sir. Plus or minus 118, and we'll round off, call it 120. The existing interest rate is about a 437, and based on current interest rate ranges, sort of our best estimate of where the market is right now, we think that rate could drop to somewhere in the mid-3% range. And so we'd be taking, again, if markets squawk right here for the next couple of weeks, hopefully about a full percentage point off of the interest rate by virtue of simply rates being lower and the loan being shorter at this point than it was back in 2013. We'll give you some more statistics.
So you're saying we're going to wait until we see what the Fed's going to do?
Not necessarily.
But wouldn't that be the best thing to do? Because the president's been demanding a decrease, to lower the rate, to lower the rate we're going to get, and that's only a month or two.
Yeah, it's a good question, and in fact, it's actually next week. So the Fed will meet next week. Their decision comes out, I believe, on the 31st. And so it's all going to line up very nicely in terms of, as we get feedback from the rating agencies, because with your blessing tonight, we'll then talk to the rating agencies tomorrow, and so as we get feedback from the rating agencies, we'll know specifically what the Fed has done.
Right, but we don't want to be locked in, talking to them with the rate, the rate existing. We want to wait.
Yeah, we'll be in the marketplace after the Fed has done
Okay.
Has done their thing. Yeah. And, and the way the market has tended to work, and doesn't always work this way, you can get surprised, but the way the market has tended to work is, the way the Fed telegraphs what they think they're going to do, a lot of that has been priced into the market already. So if you go look at the marketplace, you talk to people that trade bonds every day, what they'll tell you, whether they're right or wrong, who knows, is the market is largely taking into account the fact that the Fed is expected to, to sort of take their action next week to lower their short-term interest rate. So it all, it all kind of comes together, we think at least, in pretty good timing, such that we'll be teed up to take action, be in the marketplace, hopefully lock in a rate right after the Fed meeting very shortly thereafter.
Right, but it's best to wait because of the good credit rating that we have, we're going to get special treatment.
Yeah, I think, I think, given, given your credit rating, and again, we're going to get that sort of discussions happening tomorrow to have them update that. Between the, the interest rates being as favorable as they are, again, we don't control that. So the Fed may, they may surprise us, they may not. We don't know. We don't, you know, sort of have any, any inside information there, but I think, based on the best information we have and knowing what the market has been doing, call it the last couple of weeks, certainly, the goal is to be in the market as soon as we reasonably can and make sure we get good competitive bids. So a piece of this, too, is we just sold our public improvement bonds just a couple of weeks ago, had very favorable results, that's also a factor in terms of we, we have that sort of recent track record of being in the market, having good market reception. So there's, there's a variety of different factors that lead us to wanting to do this quickly. But again, important disclaimer and disclosures, it's nothing to say that rates can't be higher or lower in the future. And so we use some of those longstanding, sort of industry benchmarks and sense of things in terms of the savings levels to dictate when, when the right time to refinance is.
Because these are taxable bonds, the interest is taxable, there's no limitation on the number of times we can refinance, refund?
That's, yes, sir. That is correct. That is correct. The new bonds will still have a 10-year call on them, so that at some level will be a little bit of a limitation, likely, just in the economics of it. But it's not like the tax-exempt bonds that we just sold for public improvement projects, whereby, because of the tax law change, we don't have that advanced refunding tool in our tool belts, tool belts, so to speak. That's right. That's right. So, yeah, the taxable world is more flexible in terms of your ability to refinance.
No questions?
Just, was there a point in time or a period in time where we were closer to what we should have been paying, whether it was 50% or 50 cents on the dollar, or was the, you know, has it always been this lopsided payment?
Well, as, as far back as, as that 2013 sort of study that, that we did with your help and with some actuaries, the funded level's been below 80% for a considerable time period.
Probably 10 years before that.
Oh, right. I would agree. Twenty years.
It, it has not been at 80% for, for a while. We certainly could find that exact time. This is where you remember.
When we did the pension obligation bonds. In a way that we couldn't have done. I mean, if, to go from 70 to 80 is 80 million.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot.
Think about, well, it was 168 million to go from 30 to 80.
Sure. So it's
That was true of most municipalities, right? I mean, we weren't alone in that.
We were.
Yeah, we were.
Yeah, that, you, you act so, so weak to this day.
As far as where we were.
Yeah.
It was, yeah.
But we have a unique plan.
Affecting almost every public pension plan.
And a long line.
And private ones, too. Paul.
We possibly could raise as much as $5 million with this transaction.
That's the hope. Yes, sir.
And let's hypothetically say 5 million. Is that the true money that the city will receive, or does other funds come out of that?
That's a very good question. That, that is, that is the net number, that is, the $5 million would be free and clear and would go into the pension funds. It's a good question.
Other questions?
So with that, we've got a couple more details for you and maybe a couple more specifics so we can go to the next page. On page seven, just to give you a sense in terms of interest rates, again, to the mayor's point, these are taxable bonds. It's a little bit different than the public improvement bonds we just sold. We're able to borrow on a tax-exempt basis. We borrow on a taxable basis for the pension bonds, just because that's basically what the, the tax code tells us we have to do. And so when we talk about taxable bonds, we can use Treasury rates as sort of a good proxy for what the overall taxable interest rate market is. And what we've put here is a graph of the 10-year U.S. Treasury from 2009 to 2019, so effectively the last 10-plus years, and we can see what that interest rate is over that time period. The 10-year Treasury tends to be sort of an overall bellwether for a variety of different things, and it serves as, as a good bellwether and measure for looking at the pension refinancing. And so what you see is a whole bunch of squiggles along that time period. You start in 2009, and you have the financial crisis, the downturn, that rate is up in the 4% range, and then through a variety of different shocks and Federal Reserve actions and et cetera, et cetera, that rate drops down to 2%, which is effectively as low as it's ever been. And we purposely put that June 4th, 2013, you see that little arrow over there, that is the day we sold the pension bonds in 2013. And so what you see there is that sometimes, you know, we're happy to be lucky and good, and hopefully, interest rate-wise, that worked out pretty well, certainly back in 2013, as we were able to lock it in just a shade above when the 10-year was at 2%. And then it went up and kind of marched up from 3% after we had already locked our interest rate in. And so you take your eye to the right and follow that over, and it bounces around a little while, bounces around, gets to 2018, 2019, it's popping around 3%. And suddenly, you've got this ski slope down that really was, was exacerbated in the springtime months to a point where we are basically plus or minus a couple basis points at about the same levels we were back in 2013. So if you ask yourself, why is it we're able to refinance today roughly six years later? A part of that answer is that overall interest rates are at the same levels, if not a little bit lower, than when they were back in 2013. 2013 was a very low rate level, and certainly, that's why we're trying to act quickly and take advantage of that, because what you see from that graph is those rates can move very quickly. We don't have any control over that, so that's why we're going to move as quickly as we possibly can and try and capture those savings, because, again, there's a lot of factors that impact interest rates. There's the Federal Reserve, there's international economic news, there's national economic news, et cetera. And so we want to move as quickly as we can to try and capture those low rates. But effectively, we are in a very similar, if not lower, interest rate time period than we were back in 2013. So on the next page, we'll give you a couple other statistics here, a little bit of then and now, 2013 versus where we see ourself right now. Left-hand Left-hand side there, 2013, that 10-year Treasury rate was 214 the day we sold. When we set this up a couple of weeks ago for the folks in the pension board, it was a 207. I just checked before I walked up here, and it's a 208. So we purposely didn't change this thing that so much because we watch it every day.
Right.
Moves up a little bit, moves down. We've seen it the last couple of weeks, as high as a 215. It has moved up. Seen as low as a 2%. And so it moves on a day-to-day basis, based on a variety of different factors. But as we stand here today, that interest rate is right in about the range that we're talking about right here. Back in 2013, we had about 169 million of bonds outstanding right after we issued them. The city has been paying that down each year responsibly, as per the fixed payment schedule. So even if we did nothing else related to the pension bonds, we have 30-plus million dollars less outstanding than we had when we issued them. So one of the questions is, all right, we issued this 169 million of pension bonds. What are we doing with them? Are we paying them down? The answer is yes. In fact, in six years, we've paid down 30-plus million dollars just by virtue of making our regular annual payments on those bonds. You take your eye one line down. The final maturity of the original pension bonds was 2037. That was a 24-year loan at the time, I'm gonna use that term loan. When we do this refinancing, that final maturity will not change. We're not talking about extending this loan, we're talking about keeping the same final maturity, which means time has a way of flying. We've only got 18 years to that final maturity time period as opposed to 24 years. So another factor in the ability to refinance for savings is the lower interest rate and the fact that our loan is even shorter. No different than if you've had a mortgage. Typically, the rate on a 15-year mortgage is lower than the rate on a 30-year mortgage, similar concept. We need a similar, a shorter loan than we did back in 2013. So that's another important factor. Take your eye one more line down to the mayor's point in terms of prepayment ability. The 2013 bonds were issued with what we called a 10-year call. It's a very typical structure in the municipal marketplace. It effectively means the bonds that mature in the first 10 years, you can't call away early. And those that mature after the first 10 years, you can. So when we issued the bonds, the call date was 10 years away. Somehow, six-plus years has gone by, and we now only have three and a half years to that call date. So that's another factor that allows us to be able to enter the marketplace and refinance for savings because we are just so much closer to that call date than we were back in 2013. The balance of the little blue boxes there, we talked about this a little already. The amount we're gonna refinance is about $118 million. That's different than the 135 at the top of the page. So why is that? That's because, again, we're only gonna refinance the portion of the loan that is producing savings for us.
Right.
If there are bonds outstanding that don't produce savings, we're gonna leave those outstanding. They've got fixed interest rates. We can do that, we've got that flexibility. And so that's why you see that difference. The estimated net savings right now, to the councilman's point earlier, the net savings that would be available to the city to go into the pension funds is that roughly $5 million. That's the best estimate we have right now. And that bottom box, the present value savings percentages. So you may recall this, when we authorized the public improvement bonds, what the bond council put in there was a provision that would allow the city to refinance any of its outstanding GO bonds so long as we had a present value savings that was 2.75% or higher. So this is one of all the percentages we talk about. This number, we actually want to be higher as opposed to lower. The minimum threshold we have in place is 2.75%. We right now in the marketplace are about 4.3%. The industry best practice in your financial policy is to be in that 2.75 or 3% range in terms of the minimum savings level. What that's really doing is measuring how sort of efficient and effective that refinancing is. And so again, we wanna be, and by virtue of your authorizing ordinance, need to be at above 2.75%. So what that really does is protects the city such that if interest rates really move away from us, which hopefully they don't, but if they do, and there's no savings, we basically can't go issue the bonds because, again, it wouldn't produce a sufficient savings to argue that it's a responsible thing to do. And so that's what that level is really doing. It's like a safeguard to make sure that we're not doing 100-plus million-dollar transactions, not leaving a substantial benefit for the city. So on page number nine, we worked with John Hancock to put together, this is really their numbers, this is not something that we do, this is their specialty, projected funded ratios for the pension plans. And they wanted to make sure that we caveated all this with the fact that these projections rely on a whole bunch of different assumptions. So the numbers they run are very complex, it's a very specific science in terms of how you run actuarial projections. They will differ and vary over time based upon all those different assumptions that go in there. But with that caveat having been made, what we wanted to see and understand was what really is the impact of getting that 5-plus million dollars in savings, getting it into funds in FY '20, and thus allowing it to basically compound over time. And so what you see in that graph there is the dark green bar, excuse me, dark blue bar, is the projected funded ratio of the two pension funds if the refinancing does not occur, doesn't happen. And so we started about 70% on the left-hand side. And this is an important point. As you go from 2018 and fast forward to 2023, so we shoot five years into the future, that projected funded ratio actually drops. And so when they're running their numbers, what they're assuming in there is that we continue to make 7.25%, which is not a guarantee.
Right.
The demographic assumptions they're using are static.
That is based on hitting the discount rate of 7.25%?
It is. And we asked the question, why is that? And it's because of the rolling average.
Right.
And the investment returns and how that gets factored into the numbers. And the fact that the last several years, we haven't made that 7 and 1/4, that hasn't been totally factored into the actuarial value.
We get whack.
And so over time...
And year three and four.
That's right.
Right.
That's right. And so it builds over time. And so even, again, as we understand it from the actuaries and our numbers, but we asked that question, what really is driving that? And it's the fact the last several years, we haven't made that 7.25%. And it kind of gets averaged in the way actuaries do their numbers. It doesn't hit you all at once, which is done on purpose. So it's not sort of, you know, sort of a whims of the market swinging things too far. But again, even if you meet you 7 and 1/4, that funded ratio is projected using John Hancock's numbers to decline. And so you compare that with the light blue bar. And in the light blue bar, we gave them that roughly $5 million in savings and said, all right, if you take that number, plug it into your projections, what happens to that funded ratio over the next five and 10 years? And that's where you see in 2023, those middle two bars, the light blue bar, which assumes the refinance is about two percentage points higher than the dark blue bar. And then if you take it out a full 10 years, which is a long time from now, a lot of things are gonna happen and change over that time period. But over that 10-year time period, it gets you about four percentage points in terms of the funded ratio. So that's the power of compounding over time, why we like the idea of getting the dollars in sooner, letting it sort of flow into the investments, letting that compound over, you know, as long a time period as possible.
Right.
And this assumes no dramatic increases in the liability on the... by the actuary on lifespan?
Or more people coming in.
That's the part we don't have control.
There won't be more people coming in because it's closed.
There are people who are not, who are in it, but about 40-something that are not retired. And they are in their 40s.
Right.
So they're not coming in to 20 years.
All those estimates, I think.
That should be factored in, but I think maybe your point, if they go change the actuarial tables, which we don't have any control over, you don't have any control over in two years, from our understanding, from my understanding, nothing like that is factored into those numbers. It's sort of a static thing they run. They say, all right, based on the best info we have today, we're gonna project this out. And that's what it looks like. And if the overall actuarial environment changes in 12 months, and they say, you know what? We gotta update these things again, it could impact it again. So I think your point, maybe our point in there is, this is gonna be a continual process of managing these pension funds. We've known that. Dr. Patton?
I think that, Mayor, may I speak? We, as city managers and just talking with other city managers, when the government changed the actuarial formula, they gave cities about two years before it had to be put in place. And so once it was put in place here, I mean, it just changed things. And so as Mr. Luck said, they're gonna change it again. I mean, it's not gonna just say this. And so it will become more and more impactful. And that's why municipalities didn't want that to be a part of it at all. And I just think it's just gonna continue.
And I think to Dr. Patton's point, the process of managing pension fund is a long-term process, which is both the good and the bad thing.
Yeah.
Right, so if we're able to refinance, save substantial dollars and get that into the fund, the good is that that's gonna have time.
Yes.
Compound. There's gonna be some good years and some bad years. But certainly, from our perspective, the more dollars we can get in there, the sooner, the better we're gonna be.
Yeah.
And so that's the good side of it. The bad is that it takes years to sometimes work out of a situation where we haven't met our discount rate, or we're going way back in history. You know, it wasn't funded way, way back in the day at the level that it needed to be. And so what we have is a process whereby annually, each and every year, we gotta make sure we've got the discipline to be watching it. Because small changes that are made on an annual basis can have a big impact as it compounds over time, both on the good and the bad.
That's right. You kind of, this is not towards you, sir. But I'm upset. I'm thoroughly upset. In fact, I lost my breath. The mayor says we lost $80 million over four years.
I didn't quite say it that way.
Well, you said it would take $80 million to catch it up. So maybe we didn't. It's not that. But it went four years ago, it was at 77% sovereign. Now it's at 67%. And you says it takes $80 million to carry it to 80. So we're talking about 70-plus million dollars. And we sit here calm, like, that's nothing. I wanna know where were the breaks? Why no one took us off the plane before it failed? I'm wondering, how can you sit before us and say, well, some years are good and some are bad? We don't want you for that. We want good years, all good years. And we're blessed because we got the good credit rating and because we can refinance the $5 million. But this is, we're not doing anything. If we're gonna lose money in a stock market, we don't need to play. We need to get a fixed rate and should have stayed at 77%.
Yeah, so Mr., appreciate your comments. And I think a couple of points there. Number one, we don't do the investments, so that's a separate outside independent entity.
I understand that.
Number two, I think to the point of managing a pension fund, it is a, just like any other obligation in the city, it is a long-term, long-term process. And so there is going to be ups and downs in that process, especially on the investment side. And that's just the nature of pension funds. So I think that's where we're having the annual discipline to make sure that the annually funded contribution is made. And we're gonna talk about at the end of this, some policies to put in place to further safeguard it. So I can appreciate certainly your frustration there.
Can you go to slide two? Because it's not all on the return on the investment.
That's right.
It's also caused by people living longer. If you think that, you know, I only have to pay Johnny for 20 years, and Johnny lives 25 years, then that's five additional years that you didn't factor in. And so the demographic tables changed. We didn't change it. The people who figure this changed it.
I understand that. But when we get to a point of 77%, and four years later, we're at 67%.
And it's six years.
Well, I'm saying four. My account is four. Four years ago, we were at about 77. But anyway, I wanna change. I don't wanna lose money in the stock market. I don't care who's investing and who's the representative of the investment. I don't want that. I don't want that for this city. I want us to make money. If we're not gonna make money, we might as well get 3% or 4% on our money and trot down the street. But to play this game and lose this kind of money, I won't be here and not protest this. It's terrible. It's atrocious. We've been had. It makes you feel all of those things. And it's gotta stop. It's gonna stop. I yield.
Chad? One thing, you know, as being a part of the retirement board, I mean, I understand, you know, some of this stuff. You know, there's a historical footprint. And not to go back to the past, but I will say what we did in 2013 was significant as a city. We made a significant investment to shore up the retirement with our citizens in mind to do the right thing. What I know and what I've seen thus far, based on the information, the policies that we are now undertaking, are sound policies based on standard practices. And we're doing what our advisors instruct us to do. Paul, I certainly can appreciate your position. And there are things that perhaps we can do better. But in terms of the work that's being put in now, and what we're doing in terms of keeping our eyes on the ball and making the prudent and right decisions, based on what I've heard and what I've seen, I'm fairly comfortable with what we're getting. And I agree with you that this is something that's not gonna go away. Councils after us will have to deal with this same issue. And so we've gotta make sure that we're good stewards today so that we can have a better tomorrow.
Mayor, if, Mayor and members of council, and to add upon what our representative, Councilman Glover, said, one of the, let's look at what things you all have done as a council. You have appointed a very strong retirement board with people with financial backgrounds. That has been commented by our advisors and commented by citizens who are part of the retirement system. You have staff now that's responsible for advising and working with the board. That's your city attorney. Assistant City Attorney Derek Challenger is here. The two of them serve. You have your chief financial officer, you have your human resources director. Those are key staff persons that give full attention to this board. And then the other thing that is so important is that we have this board as a major priority because right now, with the new actuaries, this retirement fund must last through 2098. And with they changing, it may go into a whole new century. So you all have put in place what is necessary in the kinds of reports and the things that we're doing, that we're moving forward, we're doing the right things. And as Mr. Glover said, beyond us, it will continue. You're putting things in place. You're putting things in place to make that happen.
Well, I don't think the board is the problem. And that's not it. I don't care where the problem is, but we got to find the problem. We have to find the problem. And so, when she talk about how good the board is, now, I'm not attacking those folk. Is she saying that this is a problem?
You're not attacking me.
Is she saying this is the problem? They have this, 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 and this?
No.
Well, I'm looking for the problem here, and we can have doctors, and then you can get a gentleman with common sense on that board, and he can possibly carry you further than a doctor. All I'm interested in is results. I'm not interested in titles. I'm not interested in what schooling you got. I'm interested in protecting the people's money, and that's what we're going to do.
Well, I think that's, you're speaking for all of us.
Yeah, but we're not, we're steadily losing money, and nobody's complaining.
That's not true.
Well, this is the first time we've, there's ever been any complaints in a public session with me being here.
That's not true. That's not true.
Well, no, no, no. I'm not saying that you aren't concerned, but you have to, if you concerned over $80 million, you got to do something about it. You just can't sit back and say, oh, yes, I'm concerned. Trust me, I'm concerned. Yes, we are concerned, but concern is nothing. We have to do something.
I'm going to let you finish, and then I'm going to, all right. Every time there's a request that we up the payment to retirees, makes those numbers go on the negative.
That's not what I'm saying.
But you've got to understand.
It's a reality. It is a reality.
I'm saying our investments are poorly done.
Uh-uh.
Have to be.
They're not.
Paul, that's your opinion.
They're not.
I think it's important for all of us to remember, and I know, I think, Shannon, didn't you serve on the Blue Ribbon Panel back many years ago?
No.
You were not on that, I thought you were. Well, it's not that we have, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's not that we have X dollars sitting in the bank, or in the fund, and the dollars went down. It's that the ball has changed, and the percentage has gone down, because the actuary keeps changing the rules. The actuary says, oh, now you need this much. No, now you need this much, because, oh, isn't it great? Your employees who are in your pension fund are living longer, and so, now, instead of this much, you need this much. It's changed dramatically over the last five or six years that I've been paying attention, which is why this council, a few years ago, put such an emphasis on these pension funds, and put smart people there to make smart investments, to do as well as they could. It's not investments going down, it's the requirement going up.
I understand.
And Ms. Simmons is right.
Everybody plays by the same rules, and everybody doesn't lose money in the stock market.
We didn't say we did.
Yeah, and I think, Councilman, that's an important point, because Ms. Simmons is right, in that because the funded ratio's gone down, does not necessarily mean you've lost money in the stock market. What it means is, and I think a couple different folks have said this, what the actuaries have to realize, and it takes years and years, but folks are living longer.
That's right.
So that gets factored into the assumptions. And you could go say, you know what, let's assume everybody in the pension fund lives to be 105. And if you wanted to do that, you could probably have a debate with the actuaries and say, fine, we're going to assume everybody lives to 105, but it's just not realistic.
So if you're saying it's not manageable.
It evolves over time. And so, that evolution gets factored into the numbers over time. And that's why managing one of these, to Dr. Patton's point, this thing is probably going to be in place until, what was your?
2098, right now, with this change.
But what everybody's saying to me is, oh, it's not manageable. Well, then, why are we playing with it? Why are we continuing to sit here?
I've got a question for you.
Yes, sir, Ms. Mayor.
Is there a move in the industry to move to a lower discount rate?
There is.
To 6%?
There is, there is. When the rating agencies.
And that's just going to exacerbate these numbers, too.
Right.
And see, that's a thing that's out of our control. We don't determine that.
He changing the rules.
Listen, all the cities in Virginia don't lose money.
Doesn't.
A lot of the cities make money, and don't. I want to protect the citizens' money. If we're going to continue to use, lose money, and give old the thousands of reasons why, and can't control them, there's going to need to be.
There's a difference between losing money and the liability increasing. And that is what we're talking about, in that we're facing an increase in the liability, not because we're losing money, but because the rules have changed in the game.
And they haven't changed us reports, but.
They change across the nation.
But that equates.
All across the nation.
But that equates to.
We've got to go.
The retirement system constantly needing infusions of cash, which is money.
And it will.
It will continue.
Which is money.
It will need infusions of cash into the future.
So we're going to have to give the infusions, then we're going to nickname it to something else, other than money.
No, no one's.
Well, you say something, and then when I ask you about it, then you're saying something else. Then when I ask you about that, you're going somewhere else. All I want to do is get a handle on this. That's all I'm trying to do. And I'll, well, I just want to get a handle on it, for the citizens' sake. I don't want to say that the actuary, I don't want to say that the interest rate, I don't want to say thousands of things that failures can say. I want to be able to move forward with those things that are going to make, propel us forward, and stop those things, that, those reasons why, this is why, that's why. Well, let's get it.
That is why we're having this discussion tonight, Paul. Your argument about a liability increasing, you're talking to the choir here. We think it's, we're not losing money on our investment. What's happening is the liability, which impacts those charges, is increasing, and it's increasing because it's being done by rules that we don't set. If the industry goes to a discount, if the industry goes to a lower discount, it's just going to exacerbate these numbers for us.
Well, someone for me, give me where we lost money, why we lost it, whether we lost it on this bond being put here, or this bond put there. Doc Patton, I'll take flight to save the city money.
Yes, sir.
That's all I want to do.
Yes, sir.
And over four, five, six-year period, when we continue to go, and it's all right, and then we're scrambling for ways to give infusions, no, we got to, we can stop this.
Okay.
We got to get on the stronger legs than this.
Okay. Thank you.
Before the pension obligation bonds, the amount of the corpus in both was about 95, 98, something million?
That sounds about right. Yes, sir.
All right. And so, we infused it with 168.
168, yeah.
And I'm going to say 95, 13, 263 million dollars in 2013, in back-of-the-envelope numbers. Does anybody know what the corpus is today? I mean, off the top of their head.
Did you get that count?
Don't, off the top of my head, we could probably find relatively quickly.
Yeah.
What it likely is, is it's probably smaller, and it's not smaller because of investment losses. It's smaller likely because you're paying out annually to the folks that have been in that pension fund and have earned that benefit.
Right.
So what we're trying to do here, is make sure that as those folks live longer, there's enough money in that account, like a retirement, if that's exactly what it is, it's a retirement account, right? So we want to make sure there's enough money in that account, so that those folks are living longer, which has been a very major impact to that funded ratio. Folks are no longer living to be 70, they're not living to be 80.
90.
Or longer, 90, however long you want to go. That means you've got to have more dollars in that pension fund. And the frustrating part is that you don't control that.
But we caught that pension fund up to be able to sustain itself when in 13.
2013.
And then, we're back in the same place again.
You're not back in the same place. You were at 30% after 2013. You are at 70% now, so what we're talking about is.
But we haven't, we've gone down, we haven't gone, we haven't.
That's right. You've gone down.
Maintained stability and improvement. I'm used to maintaining or improving in my life, and in anything I touch, and that's what I promise the citizens, and that's all I want.
We appreciate it. We've got the same goal, so I think with the balance of this, the goal is to do that.
At least someone, I'm not saying I know more than you about investments, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying one and one is two. That's what I'm saying. But if someone can, I would love for them to give me the reasons where, the reasons why, where, and why we haven't changed. Those are the questions that I want answered. And what changes can we make to improve?
Right, we'll get that call.
Dr. Patton, will you meet with?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And the liaison, you may.
Why not?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll meet with them.
All right.
We'll have, sit down, all of us.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd just make a statement. Kyle, great coming before us with this information, and I think I met your dad at VML, so we didn't even think you were, you know, old enough to do the presentations, but, you know, it's great information. I mean, we all invest at some point in our life, so, you know, it brings it to a realization on what can happen. But my question is, I guess, you know, and I don't know if any of us can even answer this, I mean, the feds keep changing the actuality. Is there some formula that they use? Is it some way that our legislators can go in and put a, I mean, you know, just, well, however, whoever, you know, changes, the federal, you know, government making the changes, you know, somehow, and will we always be able to look at at least a five-year period where we can refinance and keep our numbers at a comfortable rate?
Yeah, I think, so, two questions. I think the first is certainly not that where, where, I mean, what the actuaries are really doing is they're taking into account the fact, folks are living longer, that means you've got to have more dollars in there, and to their credit, they don't tend to make knee-jerk kind of reactions to things, understanding that these are very long, live systems. And so, it gets factored into the numbers over time, and so, the good, again, is that what they usually do is give us some time, as Dr. Patton mentioned, to kind of build into these things.
Right.
And so, is there a way for you to impact that? I suspect not, because it really is just, is tracking the fact that people live longer than they used to.
Yeah.
But second, in terms of the ability to keep putting dollars in there and refinance in the future, it would not shock nor surprise me that if we do this refinancing now, in five, seven years, knock on wood, we may be able to do it again. No guarantees, no promises, certainly rates can go wherever they want to go, but that's something that we hope we'll have the chance to do, but we're not planning on it. And so, as you look at the projections, there's no future refinancing planned in those on purpose. It's sort of one of those, hope for the best, plan for the worst kind of situations, but certainly, we'll all be collectively watching that in the future. You'll have that ability.
Yeah, and it just seems like to me, at some point, I mean, we're not going to be where we get to people who live into 80, and then people who live into 90, and then people who live into 100, and then they live into 125. It just seems to me, you should be able to say, at some point, this is where we cap off, and especially if we have a close plan, and knowing, you know, what our citizens, who are enrolled in that.
Yeah, and I suspect the real people to answer that question is John Hancock. We know this by extension, but they really are the folks that live and deal and breeze with this, you know, sort of every single day. So that would, that'd probably be my recommendation on that side, should think about the assumptions and the actuaries and some of those very specific questions. I think those are probably the right people to answer those questions.
Kyle, real quick question, and this is an absolute hypothetical. If a municipality, for some reason, had a surplus windfall, and there was $80 million in that windfall, could they take those funds and shore up a retirement plan with that? Would that be something that the rules would allow, or in any scenario?
Yeah, within a hypothetical, probably a lot of legal side that has to be looked at, depending on where the dollars came from, but if you suddenly had $80 million in the windfall, I think that would be a discussion we'd have, which is.
You can make an embellished point, anytime you want to, of any amount.
Right, 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 right. I just, I would just want to know whether there are any restrictions or anything, just, it was just a hypothetical question.
Hypothetically, none that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
What happens usually is someone raids the retirement, and that's happened at so many different levels. It's happened at the state level.
Right.
It happens at the local level. I don't know if it's ever happened here. It happens in the private sector.
Yeah.
It's very inviting when you look down and say, well, I've got 263 million, and I've got this real pressing problem I need to solve right now. I'll worry about retirement 20 years down the road.
Good point. Yeah.
When we're dealing with folk money, we have to be very proactive to change. Now, we know that the market's good. Everybody's got a pocket full of money at this time, but everybody's looking for the downturn the first of the year. Are we looking at that? Are we prepared for that?
We are looking.
Are we prepared not to lose another 60 or 70 million dollars? Or are we just going to be patsies in the change that occur?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Battle, excuse Councilman, part of that answer may be, and we talked about the rating agency results side of things in the second presentation, so I don't know if it's going to address specifically your question, but I think we've got some commentary in terms of how the city sets up.
See, because we're going to have a turn in the next year, and I really don't want us to hurt the city.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
We all do. Thanks, Ms. Patton.
We'll get together.
Yes, sir. So in terms of next steps, we're here today, we have on the regular session, as we understand it, a resolution.
Yes.
That in effect says that any dollars that we are going to save by virtue of refinancing go directly into the pension and not going someplace else. And so, that is the specific action that we would request of city council, because when we go tomorrow to update the rating agencies, we're going to be able to make that statement very definitively, that city council's active to say, you know what, if we are able to save these dollars, which hopefully we are, they're going directly into the pension fund, not somewhere else. And so, then, in terms of next steps, we say here, by mid-August, we're really targeting, we think, the second week in August, by the time the rating agencies get their results back to us, we need those ratings to sell, you know, bonds of this magnitude, will then be in the marketplace probably second week of August, the interest strategy locked in at that point, and we'll know exactly what the savings is. So those really are our immediate next steps. And then, last page here, and we'll move on, some things that we would recommend, again, in the sort of best practices mode, to continually look at how you enhance what you're doing on the pensions side, look to the city's financial policy. So the pension board has updated its investment policies, some of its policies and practices, up to the actual composition of the board. We think what the city could do on your side, meaning city council, is put some more specific language into your policies to talk about that 80% target funded status, to talk about the fact that we won't give COLAs unless we get to 80%. That may be controversial, we understand.
You've got to do it.
But that certainly is going to help maintain that, that 80% level. Again, having outside reviews, and even looking at the OPEB, which, again, we haven't talked about much tonight, but the healthcare side of things, and having a certain funded level on that side. The rating agency liked the fact that you, as a city, have set up a trust for that OPEB. That's a good thing. You're putting dollars into that trust, that also is a good thing, and that'll be a liability that'll be managed over years, just like a pension. So that's. So that is the end of our pension side of the presentation.
Thank you.
We appreciate any other questions. We'd be happy to address them.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have scheduled conference calls with our rating agencies tomorrow, starting at 9:00 AM. Moody's, 10:00 AM, S&amp;P, and 1:00, Finch. And based on this resolution passing tonight, then we will be talking with them about moving forward with the bond.
Yes, ma'am.
Move to the next.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So the second topic we wanted to cover this evening, again, is a little bit of an overview and an update, since we did just go see the rating agencies back in June, and they gave us their very specific feedback. They did a full review of the city and the credit ratings, including all the various factors they look at. We wanted to give you an update, sort of a sense of what they said, some thoughts for the future, as we think about, again, maintaining, and maybe even enhancing the city's credit ratings into the future. So here's what they said. So again, we have our three credit ratings, Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch. Following those successful results from them, we're able to sell our roughly $24 million of public improvement bonds to support the capital program, take care of the capital projects across the city. Those sold competitively in the marketplace in June, and the interest rate on those bonds was a 267. That's a fixed rate for a full 20 years. And so I think it's worth sort of taking a step back. And again, for those of you that watch financial markets, even if you don't, to say, all right, we've been able to lock in 20-year fixed-rate money at a 267 speaks a lot to both the good reception the city had in the marketplace, as well as just how low overall interest rates are. And that, again, led us to the pension bond discussion. So on page number three, in terms of where we are with our three credit ratings, we've got highlighted there in the green boxes where we stand with Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch. They all are effectively at the same level. They use pluses and minuses, and ones and twos a little bit differently. But the city of Portsmouth enjoys very strong credit ratings from all three national credit rating agencies. And so those agencies are looking at local governments all across the state, all across the country. They use standardized metrics, as well as specific local information, to come up with those credit ratings. What they've told us, completely outside independent entities, is that we have very strong creditworthiness, using their term, not ours. If you flip the page to history here, this is very small type. I admit, we wanted to give you a history going back all the way to 1971 at the top of the page, and then at the bottom of the page, where we've been recently. And I think it's worth noting here that from 2015 till now, so four, five years, we'll round up a little bit, just kind of call it about five years, we have been very stable with the rating agencies. So as they do their annual reviews, as they do the in-depth reviews they just did in June, where they're looking at our economy, they're looking at our finances, they're looking at our pensions, they're looking at our debt, what they have said is, taking all those factors in to the equation, our ratings are indeed stable at that very strong double-A level. So that is something that we feel good about. It's an accomplishment for the city, for the administration, to have that very strong credit rating and maintain it. So I wanted to let you know.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
So on the next couple pages, each rating agency, they use their own terms, they're all independent of each other. We wanted to give you just a little summary of what they said. We'll start with Moody's, that tends to be, they're the oldest, they tend to be the most challenging, so to speak, of the agencies. And so what Moody's has started to do in their reports is give us some very specific factors that could lead to an upgrade in the rating, put that little green box there. Factors that could lead to a downgrade in the rating, put that in the red box. And they do a nice job of summarizing this. So the very first thing they say is something that could lead to an upgrade, and I would argue just an ability to maintain our credit rating, is continued ability to maintain an adequately funded pension program without budget or balance sheet deterioration. So one of the first things they're looking at, to the point that we've been talking about for the last hour or so, is the importance of the pension fund on our credit rating. Other things that could be a positive for us, substantial increase in the tax base, sustained improvement in financial performance. That basically means that we're having annual surpluses that we get to the end of the year. We have a structurally balanced budget. And lastly, there, a decreased debt burden. So that's the green side. That's the good side. Bottom of the page, what do they say could lead to a downgrade on the red side? Again, the first thing they note there is pensions, inability to sustain improved funding of a pension plan. Again, their words, not ours.
Yeah.
Not a surprise to anybody, and it's why we've been talking about it so much. Second, and this is important, as we think about economies, we think about how it is we maintain credit ratings, something that's very much within City Council's day-to-day control, and that's reserve levels. You think about your fund balance, you've got fund balance policies in the general fund, in the utility fund. Portsmouth has had, for years now at this point, very strong fund balance levels. And those have gone a long way to help sort of balance out some of other challenges, for instance, on the pension fund, by being able to argue that we've got very nice fund balance in the general fund and the other funds. And so you'll see here at the end of this, we've made a couple of recommendations for you in terms of how we make sure that we maintain those credit ratings in the future. If there's one that we'll come back to over and over again, it's maintaining very strong fund balance levels. So again, they talk about the reserve levels. They talk about if we were to increase the fixed cost and debt burden, they're factoring both pensions and debt into that. That's why we focus so carefully when we think about your multi-year CIP on those policies. You've got certain policies that dictate how much debt we have outstanding in the general fund, dictate both the payment and the level of the debt. And your CIP keeps you in compliance with those levels. The rating agencies know that, they see that year over year. It's important to make sure we continue watching that. And then lastly, they talk about the tax base. The reality is the single largest portion of the credit rating is driven by the economy. And so that is the one thing that is probably the least within your day-to-day control as a City Council, but it is the single largest portion of the credit rating, as Moody's looks at it. So on the next page, we'll look at S&amp;P. They've got some similar kind of commentary. Again, we've taken the outlook here, I'm not going to read that word for word. But what they're basically saying in that top is, we expect the city's going to continue to maintain balanced operations. We've got revenues that are covering our expenditures and strong finances due to its very strong management policies and practices. So again, S&amp;P, using their term, not ours, recognizes the city is having very strong management policies and practices. They give us an upside scenario whereby if economic development continues to yield results, you can see some upward movement in the credit rating. And the downside scenario, in their terms, the city were to significantly decrease reserves due to weak budgetary performance, et cetera, that could lead to a downside. So again, thinking about the economy, but really thinking about reserves, as we think about things that are within your, meaning City Council's, control, is having a very direct impact on your credit rating. Fitch, our last rating here, they talk about, they tend to use little different terms, the expectation the city will maintain a high level of financial flexibility, sort of the councilman's question earlier about downturns. One of the things these folks worry a lot about is if we do have a downturn, what kind of financial flexibility do we have? One of the first things we go point to is in fact, we've got a good fund balance. So your ability to manage, keep your credit rating through a downturn can depend a lot upon how strong that fund balance is, and making sure that, again, we can demonstrate that it's not just at the policy minimum, that it's at a level higher than our policy minimum. So the next couple pages, we just wanted to give a couple summary takeaways with what I'll call the four food groups in the rating agencies. There's really four critical things they tend to look at. Economic development is the first one there. As I said, that's the biggest driver of a local government's credit rating. And while things like the unemployment rate and income levels may be outside of your direct day-to-day control, certainly economic development, we spend a lot of time talking to the rating agencies about what you're doing on the economic development side. So being able to have that development, being able to have it yield new jobs, point to expanding tax base, those are things that count a lot in terms of the rating agency's view. The second there, finances. So a couple things there, making sure we continue to have structurally balanced budgets whereby our recurring revenues are covering our recurring expenditures. That is critical. And the bottom of the page there, making sure we've got very strong reserve levels across all of our funds. Again, we could probably spend a whole nother hour talking about fund balance and why it's important. We won't do that. But again, the rating agencies care a lot about it. Last two things here, and then I promise we'll wrap up, long-term obligations. So long-term obligations, factors in tensions, which we've been talking about, and factors in debt, and it factors in some of the healthcare side of things as well. So maintaining our debt within our policy limits, that's something you've been doing, something you're planning, sort of expect you'll continue to do. And so we've got that set up. Making sure utility enterprise funds continue to be self-supporting for the city. We're primarily thinking about water and sewer. We historically have had a water and sewer fund that has not relied on general fund support. Making sure we continue to have that place will be important, because then all of that sort of activity, those obligations, are really booked and accounted for as water and sewer only. It doesn't get layered onto the general fund on top of everything else. The pensions, we won't talk about anymore, but we certainly have there in terms of those. And last bullet point there, and this is something the rating agencies, especially Moody's, have started to pay more attention to, and that is making sure that you're making some investments in the capital infrastructure. So it's not to say, you know what, we don't want any more debt, we don't want to do any more investment, and that's going to keep us in good shape, because it's not realistic. At some point, you've got facilities, you've got schools, you've got roads. And so what Moody's especially has started to realize and recognize is that there is a cost to unfunded capital upkeep. So if the roofs are leaking, if the deferred maintenance, whether it's the roads, anything else, that's going to cost money over time.
Sure is.
Typically, it costs more money if you push it out too far in the future. So it's a balancing act. It's making sure that we've got the debt in levels that is responsible in line with the policies, but at the same time, keeping up with the capital maintenance and doing those investments that you need to do to maintain the city. Lastly, in terms of management-
On that same vein, there was a threat that we were going to, we, local government, would be looked at sharply as it related to preparing for resiliency. What is the status of that?
Yeah. And so that covers a couple different topics, and it's kind of a newer hot topic for the rating agencies, but it covers things like weather, climate change, sea level rise, something that's a hot topic around here, we know you're used to dealing with, the rating agencies have been asking a lot about that. They worry a lot nowadays about cybersecurity. So they've been asking more and more questions about what are you doing on the cybersecurity side of things? What kind of policies do you have in place? What kind of insurance policies do you have in place if, God forbid, there is some kind of an event on the cyber side of things? And so they talk about resiliency. Mr. Mayor, you obviously were there and heard those comments. It has a lot to do with the resiliency against natural disasters, against climate change, against the cybersecurity side of things. Those tend to be the, I'll call it the big three, that they're focused on and starting to look a little harder on than they have in the past.
Have they quantified any way to measure that from their perspective yet?
Not that we've seen. I suspect they're probably working on something, but nothing specific we've seen. So our ability to talk about where we're making investments, like seawall, stormwater, et cetera, on the resiliency with that side of things, as well as being able to talk about how on the IT infrastructure side you have in place, where I understand is relatively updated, insurance, you've got in place new policies on the infrastructure side, excuse me, the technology side of things. So those kind of things are important, and you've been able to make those, so those investments, those comments to the rating agencies.
Okay.
Okay.
So Fat, we appreciate any other questions. Happy to address them.
All right. We have a resolution on the agenda.
Yes, I'm going to go. Thank you, Mr. Loz. We're ready to proceed with City Manager's report. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, you have five City Manager reports tonight. The first is the FY 2020 EasyNet NG 911 Migration Grant Award. It's an adoption of an ordinance accepting a new generation 911 EasyNet migration grant in the amount of $428,737,763 from the Virginia 911 Service Board, and appropriating said fund to the FY 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Information Technology. The second is a Four for Four Life Fund, and that's adoption of an ordinance accepting Four for Life Program Grant Funds in the amount of $76,402.56 from the Virginia Department of Health, Office of Emergency Medical Services, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Grants for use by the Fire Department, which includes rescue and emergency services. The next is requiring that board and commission members be physically present to vote. It's adoption of an ordinance to amend and re-ordain Chapter 2 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, 2006, as amended by amending Section 2-28 Boards and Commission to confirm that members of boards and commissions must be physically present at the meeting in order to vote.
And this item is a product of our last meeting?
Yes, the June, July 9th meeting. The next is the item of which we've been having presentation on dedicating pension obligation bond refinancing savings to enhancing fund status of the two pension funds. It's an adoption of a resolution dedicating all savings realized from the refinancing of the city's 2013 pension obligation bond to the Portsmouth Retirement System and the Portsmouth Fire and Rescue, Fire and Police Retirement System for the sole purpose of enhancing the funding status of the two systems.
We have, oh, we're on the agenda. We have the consent agenda, and typically, we adopt the, I'll turn down, we adopt the consent agenda by one motion. And so I will ask for a motion on the consent agenda. If there's a second, then I'll open it up for discussion. If there's anybody that has signed up to speak to either one of these, I'll ask them to come to the lectern. Once we've finished that, we'll continue the discussion on the consent. Once there's no more discussion, we'll consider the motion. Is that agreeable with everybody?
Sure.
It's agreeable to me.
Okay. Dr. Patton?
I have one more City Manager's side.
Okay.
All right. It's titled endorsing EDA Resolution Regarding the Victory Site. It's adoption of a resolution endorsing the resolution of the Economic Development Authority authorizing and redirecting staff to market the former Victory Village site for development of an entertainment district to include casino gambling. And I have three report backs.
Let's stick to the agenda for a moment. We have presentations, we actually have three. We have our ongoing presentation of the Social Services Foster Parents, and our director will be present.
Yes.
Council had expressed a desire to recognize in a public meeting those neighborhoods that have received a grant from the city. And would you explain what that process is going to be?
Yes, it's the neighborhood incentive grant, and we have six representatives from six different neighborhoods who have received the grant. Mr. Doug Weller will give just a brief about the grants, and they will come up and be recognized.
Okay. And the last one is presentation of proclamation for National Night Out. I'll ask the clerk to read that proclamation, and then we'll present it to the chief.
Agreed.
Everybody good on that?
Yes, sir.
I have three report backs. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. City Council, you tasked the City Manager with assessing the condition of the Portsmouth City Jail, its facilities, and ancillary offices relating to the structural integrity, environmental safety, which includes asbestos and mechanical components. You directed me to use professional evaluators as experts in three areas. The city retained the services of Clark Nixon for the structural assessment and life safety- The city retained the services of Clark Naxson for the structural assessment and life safety, applied laboratory services for the environmental assessment, and PACE Collaborative PC for the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing assessment. The assessment of the city jail facility and ancillary offices, which includes police record unit, and property, and evidence unit, and city records. As a result of the overall assessment, the following is apparent. The jail and the ancillary offices are housed in a building that is over 50 years old, built between 1966 and '70, and have reached the end of its useful
Hold on, I'm up.
I can't either. I can't hear.
I will ask you to leave the room, please.
Well, I need to hear.
Please have a order. You don't have the floor. Ma'am.
The jail and its ancillary offices are housed in a building that is over 50 years old, from 1966 to 1970 was its building, and have reached the end of its useful service life. The building is unsafe and unsuitable for human habitation. I have been advised by the city's building official, Mr. Doug Smith, MCP, Master Code Professional, and Mr. James Wright, PE, City, Chief City Engineer, that the building must be vacated immediately, and plans put forth for accommodations to be made for all of the occupants asked elsewhere. I will meet tomorrow morning with Chief Angela Green, Chief of Police, Cheryl Spivey, Chief Financial Officer, and Sheriff Michael Moore, whose staff/inmates are occupying the building. I will inform the administrators of the building condition and the need to work with the city's logistics staff, led by Deputy City Manager Bob Baldwin, to immediately develop and implement a plan to vacate the building. The city attorney is aware of the action and is advising, as I take the necessary steps moving forward for the closure of the city complex. To show to you that we have the reports that you asked us to secure from the professionals, and these are the reports that have been received back. I have two other items.
We have a question.
Go ahead.
So, do we have a location, and how many inmates are
All of that would be the logistic part, that will start working with these administrators in the morning, okay?
No, sir.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, the Virginia chapter of an American Planning Association had its luncheon today in Hampton, and the city of Portsmouth is the recipient of two awards. The city's Bill One Portsmouth is recognized across the Commonwealth and has become a nationally recognized model for a resilience-based comprehensive plan. Based on the city's Bill One Portsmouth comprehensive plan, the city of Portsmouth was recognized today by the Virginia chapter of the American Planning Association as the 2019 recipient of the Resilient Virginia Community of the Year. The city of Portsmouth is one of four cities in the Commonwealth that has a resilience officer. The second award that was received was awarded to Mr. Brian Swetts, the Planning Administrator, who is the recipient of the Nelsonite Award at Virginia's Planning Advocate of the Year. The award was presented at the chapter's annual conference at the luncheon today. Mr. Swetts could not be here, but we wanted to bring his award so it could be recognized.
Yeah.
And last
And so, he's one of one, is it?
He's the only one. These are, no one else got these awards. There's only one city in the Commonwealth that is the Resilient Virginia Community of the Year. You can pass that around, please. The last mayor is
Do I kiss it?
We can. The last item there. At last night's discussion, you asked, council, you asked for staff to bring back the next steps with the Portside project. The city economic development director, Mr. Robert Moore, has asked to meet with the city manager and the engineering team regarding this property. I will come back to you at the April 12, at the August 12 public work session with an update. With your concurrence, we will meet with Mr. Moore and then come forward with a report. That concludes my presentations, ma'am.
We're at council liaison reports. Ken?
I don't have any at this time, Mayor. I don't have any.
Real quick, I met with the commissioners of the Portsmouth Development Housing Authority, and they were looking to form a tax entity, but it did not go through, the motion failed, so they tabled it to the next board meeting. There was some discussion with the city to provide a totlot playground in the Dale's Homes and Swanson Homes to provide additional recreational activities in the community, so they spoke with you about that. Commissioner indicated that you want the city to provide funds for the authority to reinstate a program that was called the Home and CDBG Funds to carry out activity for the city for seniors, home repairs for seniors. And also, the board wanted to get an agenda of topics that they will discuss during our October joint meeting. And the last thing, I know that there was some discussion, we all received an email about some homeless people camping out behind Westbury Homes, and what are the actions? They wanted to know where they are. They said the PRHA doesn't own that property, so we didn't know if the city or the railroad, so they're looking for some response so that they can, I mean, I don't think it's cleared up, because they told, the people who are living back there, they don't know who owns the property, so they're still putting their tents up and camping out.
We can look into that, Vice Mayor. Thank you. Paul. We do have a need for a closed session on boards and commissions. Do we have a motion?
I move that we go into closed session. Meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A, one for the purpose of discussing and considering prospective candidates for and appointees to boards and commissions.
Second.
A motion that's been made, seconded and discussed, a motion. Mr. Clark, please call.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Lucas Berg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mayor Row?
Yes, we're in closed session.